I'd like to call to order the regular board meeting of the Cordova Recreation Park District on this Wednesday, December 18th, 2019 at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Kathy Jacobs, who is with our Senior Advisory Board. And then later on in the agenda, we'll have an item recognizing the Advisory Board as well.
Okay, if everybody could stand, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, roll call.
Director Reyes?
Here.
Director Lineback?
Here.
Secretary Sloan?
Here.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Here.
And Chair Yearwood?
Here.
All right, board disclosures on any action items? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments by the public.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff, and I do not have any speaker cards at this time.
All right, excellent. We'll move on to consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar, and this evening we have two items for your consideration.
All right, any discussion? All right, anybody care to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve consent calendar C1 and C2.
Motion by Director Reyes, second.
Second.
Second by Director Lineback. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, move on to presentations. Dee.
Thank you. Item D1 is a presentation by staff in recognition of the Cordova Senior Advisory Board, and I'd like to welcome to the podium Recreation Supervisor 2 Heather Shalsky.
Hello. I'm here because if you guys don't know, did we get a picture? No, maybe?
We did.
Our ovens and griddles and stove kind of took a kapoot on us in the last six months. So we went to the Advisory Board, and they were so gracious to give us a big chunk to repair those. So they donated $3,500, and if you see right behind, or I don't know if you see it in front of you.
Wow.
Brand new, a brand new stove, griddle. We actually got a bigger griddle, which is, as some of you noticed, we had breakfast with Santa last weekend, so we made a lot more pancakes than we've ever been able to do at one time.
Wonderful.
And also for Green Thumb Lunch, when we do grilled sandwiches, stuff like that, having the bigger griddle side has been very helpful. And came to their day, like, three days before our Thanksgiving event. So we have to do six turkeys, so it was a big lifesaver. So I'd like to present Kathy with the certificate of appreciation from the Cordova Senior Advisory Board, and recognition of your generous donation to the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center. For the replacement of the stoves, ovens, and griddle, we express our sincere gratitude for your contribution and support of our organization.
Wonderful, wonderful.
I'd also like to recognize Kathy. Kathy's been on our board for four years now, and she is retiring. She's moving back to New Orleans. She did two terms for us, so she's done a lot for us. Helped with griddles, done a lot of fundraising we're just talking about today. Just today at our Winter Wonderland, I think the Senior Advisory Board raised over $500 just today, so.
Wonderful.
She's been very active, and I really appreciate, and you're going to be dearly missed, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate that you guys were able to come together with something like this, because it was really needed. You know, it was really needed there, so thank you so much.
As she knows, she's done lots of baked potato and fundraisers. We were only using, like, half of an oven, half of a griddle, so.
We were begging for this.
So it was very nice and really appreciated.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, E, we have no committee reports. F, no public hearing. All right, we'll move on to G, regular calendar.
Thank you. Item G1 is to accept the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District PMRID Oversight Committee Annual Report as of June 30th, 2019. And to deliver the presentation, I'd like to welcome to the podium Bonnie Dominey, who is the Chair of the Oversight Committee.
Hi, Directors. Thanks for inviting me here tonight. As you know, the PMRID Committee oversees the districts that are more of the older existing neighborhoods. And we had our meeting November 5th, where we reviewed the fiscal year 2018-19 revenues, expenses, and projects. It was a really great year. Our tax revenue resources for both assessments, the My Parks Enhancement Fund and the PMRID totaled $2.9 million, and we have this fabulous chart. So that was a great increase in our income. I really appreciate that. The actual expenditures for the year were $2.7 million. The biggest expenditures were the capital improvements, which was $672,106, water and utility costs of over $500,000, and then the rest of it was park landscapes and maintenance-related costs. So we had a really great year due to the My Parks Enhancement Fund. Really thrilled about what's happened. Some of the things that we've had improved or new include the Hagan Community Center, where we had doors and windows and flooring installed. Very beautiful new resources there. At the Mather Sports Center, painting, lighting, and flooring, which is really great, very exciting to see. The ceramic kiln shed at Neil Orchard Senior Center. At Prospect Park, they did some upgrades to the playground equipment. At Rosemont Park, I got a little faster than you, sorry. At Rosemont Park, the dugout and fencing were added. At Taylor Park, there was some repair of the playground and vandalism that happened there. And of course, my personal favorite is the walkways at Riviera East Park. And this is my home neighborhood, as you guys mostly know. And I had an interesting discussion with a neighbor just last week. He and I were near the water fountain, like, that's right there. And he's an older gentleman, and he has to use a walker to get around now. And he said that he is so thrilled to have this walkway, because now he can walk all the way around the park. So it's a huge change that everybody can really appreciate. And so we voted on this beautiful report, and it was unanimous that we approved it. And we hope that you'll accept this, and we look forward to another great year ahead.
All right, thank you. Nice year, a lot of good things. All right. So with that being said, does anybody have any comments, questions? Anybody care to make a motion?
Well, first I just want to really thank the PMRID. I think it has become a much more vital and useful organization contributing, or committee, however we want to refer to it, because I know it is a part of this district. But you're just contributing so much to taking the right sort of look at what's being done with the funding that the Park District has available. Obviously, immeasurably aided by the My Parks Fund. Before that, we could only, you know, concentrate on maintenance. But I just want to thank you guys so much for being engaged and involved and doing a great job.
I would like to move that the Board of Directors accept the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District Oversight Committee Annual Report as of June 30, 2019.
Motion by Director Lineback, seconded by Vice Chair Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, excellent. All right, we're going to move on to item G2.
Thank you. Item G2 is to adopt Resolution 19/20-31 to amend the fiscal year 2019-20 Cordova Recreation and Park District final budget and authorize the General Manager to file with the County Auditor Controller. And I'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
Good evening, Chair Yearwood and Board members. Staff is recommending a budget amendment for one item this evening. Park Services will be leasing their ground master mower instead of purchasing the item. And so it's basically an account shift of funds from the 4303 Equipment Asset Fund to the 3230 leases in the amount of $5,100, which would be the amount that we need to lease the equipment this year. And that's basically my report, just one item.
All right, all right. Any questions? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 19/20-31 to amend the fiscal year 2019-20 Cordova Recreation and Park District final budget for the General Fund 347A and authorize the General Manager to file with the County Auditor Controller.
Motion by Director Reyes?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, move on to H, Board of Directors' items.
Thank you. Item H1, regarding training, there was none during the last period, so item H1B is Board Member Reports.
All right, well, I guess we'll start with you, Director Reyes.
Well, the CAPRCBM Executive Board Meeting was held instead of December 2nd, it was moved to December 9th. And the conversation was more in preparation of the retirement, or Jim Simpson, who is their CEO, Executive Director, was moving on. They are looking for board members, and so they're talking, they're trying to bring in more board members that would take positions. The CCC Annual Holiday Tree Lighting, December 1st, I was watching from the corn, from behind the amphitheater. It was, I mean, I saw the carousels, I saw people riding them, but the rains, it just was, it was sad. I was really very sad. I wished that for even that moment, it could not be. The fireworks were beautiful. And I was telling my stepson, it's his home, we're living there right now. I'm like, "Look, you have prime seed." And the Christmas tree, we see it every night. We don't have to put up a Christmas tree. Every night, my father goes to the window, and then he even goes in the den and goes, "Doesn't look like there are any big ornaments sticking there," but it lights up and all the colors come out. So I was laughing, but he does. That tree is beautiful, and I love it. I love the fact I don't have to put up a Christmas tree. But yes, I saw some, you know, some families were trying to get there with little kids and all this. So I don't know what the, how many, what the population that finally showed up were, but I really felt like, oh my goodness, this was really sad, that the rains and the wind. It wasn't just rain, it was rains and the wind. But I saw the carousel going, riding, and it was really neat. But I was in warm space. So that's it, thank you.
All right. Anything for you?
Well, technically, I do have, I did attend the Breakfast with Santa at the Neil Orchard Senior Center, and it was actually really great. I mentioned to Heather, I'd gone with my grandchildren just one time, and we hadn't gone back because it was so crowded and uncomfortable for the kids. This was much better run, much more comfortable, and I loved the teddy bears that all the kids get, and they had carolers, so it was a lovely little event to go to. And I'll take my grandchildren next year.
All right. I'm going to try to make it next year. All right, Secretary Sloan, you're up.
Why do I have the longest list always? I can't figure this one out. Because I like to take photographs, that's probably why. On November 23rd, I attended the, we had a, at Riviera East Park, we had a tree planting of 18 trees in pre-dug holes, and mulch was set out there. And thanks to a lot of the community members who came to the call, we had about 60 people show up, planted those trees, including the demonstration, in about two hours. And the weather was beautiful, and we've got a nice start on beautiful trees, and we, and Bonnie and Jay over there were instrumental in this project. And I just want to thank them and the Breka Association. And next, on December 1st, I did go to the tree lighting. Of course, you, I kept calling and find out, were they going, is it going to be canceled, 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 but no, they wouldn't, they're not going to cancel it. It was raining, it was wet. That was scaled down, they didn't use the big amphitheater, they had it just in the grassy area. And most of the things were covered with, they had tents out there, and a small tent where they had a little entertainment, and Santa was, you know, having photographs taken. And still, I mean, you could see the excitement on everyone's faces. The event was still, if you didn't know how it was the previous years, and you were there, you would say, "Wow, this is a great event, and I can't believe how many people came out to this event." And it was kind of, they had a rush thing, because they got some report on their, on an app saying that they're going to, a big, a wave of storm is coming, and so they sort of rushed the tree lighting and to about 6:10 instead of 7 o'clock. But it was, it was great. I really, I did, I really did enjoy it, even though it was, it was a little bit muddy on my, on my brand-new tennis shoes.
Was the Live Nativity featuring Cupcake there this year?
No, they had fake animals this time. They, some stuffed animals. They had Eeyore was there, no.
Now I'm not mad I didn't go.
And on December 3rd, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association meeting, and it was, it was a very productive meeting, because we're going over all the finalizations of all the projects that they got allotted funding for, and some upcoming projects that for next year. And one of the ones that was earmarked on our property would be out there at the Little League Complex. And they, about $20,000 is going to be set aside, and it might be in a couple phases, but they're going to completely redo the fence at the Little League Field. And there's something about the right field foul fence, change it from five feet to six feet or something like that. There's little, little projects like that that are going to take place. Replacing the backstop, it's an old-fashioned backstop that's probably was created, I don't know if it was created for Little League, it was probably created for just recreational play, and it's the old-fashioned type, and so they're going to replace that. And then an interesting thing came up that I didn't really know anything about, but there's the prospect of the schools, Cordova High wanting to get the Major League Field for their varsity closer to the school property, so it's not so far out where Peterson is. So I think they were talking about possibly using glass field, renovating it for the, for their varsity, because it's right, you know, right there, catty corner to the stadium, and it sort of makes sense. But then we have to figure out, what do we do with Peterson Field? So that will be our next, on our next agendas coming up in the future, I'm sure. If, I don't know, it might, you know, it might be years before that's even done, but I was just, I was interested that they said that. On December 5th, I just, by chance, I just decided to attend the last meeting of the year at Rosemont Association, and I was surprised that Terry wasn't there, so, and I was glad I did show up. Because it's, at first they didn't have a quorum, but people started showing up and finally had a quorum. But I don't, see, they have a tree planting coming up on January 18th, if you're, you want to put on your calendars, if you want to come out there. They're going to be planting about 20 to 22 trees, also donated from the Sacramento Tree Foundation. And that will be from 9:00 to 12:00 PM. And then somebody asked me how the progress on the Primrose Park was going, and I got some information for them, and I shared that with them, and said that RFP has been sent out, and they're waiting for that response. And if the responses come back in, you know, a fair amount of good time, that they're going to have a, come back with a presentation back in March or April, and show three different designs of what could be their new park, which I thought, they were excited to hear that. Next one on my list was the Sacramento Valley Live Steamers. I just decided I wanted to go out and see Santa Claus, you know, and see what we're doing out there, and I was really excited and found, you know, the feedback was really great. Although I didn't see Santa actually driving the trains like I have in the past, but Santa was there, they were taking photographs, it was their fundraiser, it was nice weather, they had nice refreshments, and they had a good crowd, a good crowd of people for, it was two weekends, and it was Saturday and Sunday, from, I think, 11:00 to 3:00 every day, and that was, that was nice. And then I did, I did show up. I always want to go out and try to take photographs of Santa in the, in the, in their area, and he was also, I did attend the one over at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center, and had my picture taken with him, so. And one thing I did notice, and I didn't, I didn't, I should have, I wish I would have gone back to the kitchen and seen the new, I didn't, I probably should have, but I did notice some very, very worn chairs. And so I guess that might be next, on their list for Santa, because they're, they're pretty, they're pretty torn up, so. But the senior center's looking nice. They've got a lot of my photographs in the rec room, where the pool table is, and so I guess that's about it.
All right. Well, thank you. Anything? All right, and I don't have anything to report either, so we'll move on to H2.
Thank you. Item H2A is a ballot vote runoff election Sacramento-Lafco Special District Alternate Commissioner Offices Number 6 and 7. So as you know, in November, a mail ballot election was conducted, and it ended up being a three-way tie for the alternate commissioner position. And so staff is recommending that the board vote in the runoff election. The term of office for the alternate commissioner is January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021. So there was some corrections on the paperwork there for you. There are three candidates on the ballot, and if the board desires to vote, may vote for only one candidate. And the candidate statements are provided for you. The results of the runoff should be known after January 28th. Thank you.
Chair Yearwood?
Anybody that we know in here?
I move that the Board of Directors vote for Michael Yearwood for Sacramento-Lafco Special District Alternate Commissioner Offices Number 6 and 7.
Second. Motion by Director Reyes, seconded by Director Lineback. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Okay, I guess I'll vote yes on that.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye. All right, I guess we're moving on to what? H2B.
Thank you. Item H2B is to elect Board Officers for 2020, Secretary, Vice Chairperson, and Chairperson. Staff recommends that the board nominate and elect officer positions through separate motions. The officer duties are listed in your staff report. And just for a procedural note, the outgoing chairperson may pass the gavel to the incoming chairperson at the conclusion of all the elections, and seating at the dais will change at the January meeting. Thank you.
All right. Shall we begin?
I nominate Director Lineback to serve as Secretary of the Board of Directors for a term of one year and until the election of a successor.
Motion by Director Reyes?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Danzel. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
All right. How about Vice Chair?
I nominate that Secretary Sloan serve as Vice Chairperson of the Board of Directors for a term of one year and until the election of a successor.
Motion by Director Reyes?
Second.
Second by Director, oh.
Motion by Director Lineback, second.
I'm sorry, am I supposed to say Secretary?
It's okay.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, who said it again? Motion by Director Lineback, seconded by Director Reyes. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
I'd like to make the next nomination if I could. Thank you.
I don't know if you can, can you?
Can I?
Yeah, you may.
I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Danzel to serve as our next chairperson of the Board of Directors for a term of one year or until the election of a successor. How about that?
How about it? Motion by Secretary Sloan?
Second.
Second by Director Lineback? Okay.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Director Yearwood?
Aye. Sorry, I checked out.
Congratulations, everybody. Woo-hoo, you have a new board.
That's why you're wearing the jacket? You went out in style, Mike. Thank you, Director Yearwood.
Well, thank you, Chair Danzel. I just want to say, it's been a wonderful year. It went by really quick, so looking forward to a great 2020 with the pool and all the great things we have coming down the pipe. It's all yours.
Thank you, Director Yearwood, for your year of service as Chair. We know that as Chair, you put in a lot more time, meeting with the staff and leading and facilitating our meetings. Really want to thank you very much.
Thank you. My pleasure. And I'll see you next month, Matt. Back where it all started for me.
I like this view.
You're finally come full circle. Let's move on to item Agenda I, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Item I1 is the Districtwide Monthly Progress Report for December 2019, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you. So the updates for this month were continuously busy, as you all know. Some highlights are, I attended the Mill Station District Workshop hosted by the City of Rancho Cordova. It was a really good opportunity for CRPD to be represented in picking a consultant that the city will be looking to work with for their Mill Station District, which is considered their civic center project. It started off in that realm, but it's evolving into that type of description as to how they're going about it. So I was able to sit on a committee to decide out of eight applicants who would be going forward to recommend for the City Council to consider. There were three that were picked, the three presented at a workshop, and then from that workshop, the committee will reconvene, and we'll have our discussion about who we would recommend for the City Council to approve to use as their consultant moving that project forward. So it's been a great, real honor to be on the team, to be able to help decide that for the city. So, and I appreciate their inviting us to the table for that. We delivered gift cards, $835 of gift cards for Cordova High School's 25 students in need during the holidays. They're the homeless students at the school. need during the holidays, they're the homeless students at the school. Andrea really was the one who reached out to the school district to find out what was the most need, and the high school stepped up and said, "We would love to have an opportunity for these kids that are kind of forgotten about throughout the holidays." And so we put it out at our Thanksgiving potluck, and the response was just incredible. I mean, I think, I'm just so proud of our staff to, you know, give back to the community out of their own pockets, it wasn't something that we, you know, just collected donations from, it was something that we got from staff and a board member as well, who donated those gift cards to the students, so I really appreciate that, and it's a really good message to send out to the community that we're here for more than just the service we provide, we're here because we really care and we're a part of this community, so, kudos to the staff for that. The required trainings and upcoming schedules, all board members are currently in compliance with the required EB1234 Ethics and SB1343 Sexual Horrification Defense Training. The annual board retreat will be scheduled for January 2020, I believe Clerk Jones had sent out a request for a date for us to hammer that out, and then also, meetings with the Budget and Finance Committee and District Policies, and the PMRID Oversight Committees are all scheduled for January and February, so we're starting off 2020 with a bang. The district holiday hours, the district office will be closed to the public from Monday, December 23rd through Friday, December 27th. Staff will have the option to work during the non-holiday hours, or use appropriate leave times such as accrued vacation during the week. The city of Rancho Cordova is also closed to the public the same week. We do have some staff that are here working, some of those days that were officially open, but for the most part, if you need anything, just call me on my cell or text me, so. Cordova Pool Replacement Design, in the, the project that we're working on, again, I just wanted to reemphasize that DV Trees will be removing 20 trees from the future pool site starting the end of December, and should be completed by mid-January 2020. The tree removal is needed to accommodate the new pool grading and entry plan, and surrounding concrete deck, the required fire lane and clearance as well. The tree removal has been approved by the city of Rancho Cordova with conditional use permits and building permit processes. So we were able to get through that process because, as you were even reporting out this evening, we're doing several tree plantings throughout the district, and so we wanted to make sure that from this project, we were replacing those trees that we were unfortunately are having to take out for this project, so. It's been noted on our website, and we're making sure that the public is aware of it, and this is my second official report on this, I did report on this last month, so it is noted that this has been something that we'll be working on. Anticipation, also the interruption of natural gas service through the pool site, CRPD staff is working with a mechanical engineer and propane company to transition the natural gas appliances in the community buildings to propane during the pool construction. This change will occur over the next couple months. So as you can see, we're gearing up for the shovel in the ground, so there's a lot of preliminary work being done, and that's one of those projects that are part of the pool project in anticipation of us getting ready for that. So, and thank you for Laura and Christina James for working through that, oh my goodness, the permitting process is unbelievable. So we're almost there, we're hoping to have everything in hand on Friday, and that's a bit of a delay from what we thought we were completed, but unfortunately, we got some kickback the last week or so, and we have tenaciously going after those corrections and making sure that we have the permits to go forward with, which ultimately will help us when the project is going not to have to stop and then do permits and then start again, which is a lesson we learned from other regional projects that were developing pools as to a recommendation of how we best do this. So, thank you, Laura, for being on top of that and planning accordingly, and hopefully we won't have to react to any permitting issues as we start the construction project in early 2020. The park impact fees with Sacramento County, a contract with Goodwin and Associates was executed revising our 2014 NEXUS study specifically for the Sacramento County jurisdiction. So we're now in the process of, with all of our negotiations with BIA and all the county, to go back and take those recommendations and apply them to the 2014 NEXUS study, which is our driving principles. Once those changes are done in the master plan, we will be renegotiating that with BIA, and then eventually, we'll come with those changes to the board for ultimate approval for an amendment to that. There is a plan for us to do a bigger master plan revision coming in the next couple years, we're, we're looking to go out for consulting to get that master plan updated to reflect a lot of these nuanced changes going on. The Fetterspiel Building Demolition Electrical Revisions plans are in progress, electrical modifications will require a separate permit, of course, sorry, and staff are anticipating the demolition work will begin around February 2020. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Jill to report on the Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you. Just an update on the tree planting at Rosemont, we haven't confirmed that date yet. So today, actually, Jim and Tammy got a map from the SAC Tree Foundation with their recommendation of what trees they want to plant, and then we take a look at that recommendation and see if we approve those trees, where they're putting the trees, then we get back to them. So there's a little bit of back and forth, hopefully it can still be on January 18th, but as soon as we know, as soon as I know from Jim, I'll send it to Clerk Jones and get an invite out to the board, so stay tuned for that. Speaking of tree plantings, I know it was mentioned before, but I do want to thank again for the tree planting at Riviera East, I want to thank Breka for all of your hard work, I want to thank, obviously, the SAC Tree Foundation, and then our staff, because our staff puts a lot of hours into those tree plantings and a lot of hard work, digging the holes and, and what have you. There is a little bit of mulch left over, so Breka, go for it if you want to mulch around the trees, we would love that and appreciate that, we talked to Kim the other day, and she's all for it, so, yay! But thank you, we appreciate everyone's hard work with those tree plantings, it just helps our community out. At the Hagan Community Center, we have Kudos, that needs to go out to the Turns and Tumble, that's one of our contractors, that does a whole bunch of different classes over at Hagan, they do some ballet and some hip-hop dance, and they were voted best place to take dance lessons for Sacramento Magazine's 2019 Best of Sacramento, so, kudos to them, which is fantastic, we love having them, they do a great job, so, yay! I know. Like Heather mentioned in her presentation, we are very thankful for the Senior Advisory Board and their contribution to the new stove, new stove and that griddle, they were able to donate the $3,500 towards that new equipment, the equipment did cost a little bit over $6,000, but it was well worth it. If you've been over to an event over at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, it is busy all the time, so this is just perfect, we appreciate their help in making sure that we continue to cook some really good food for, for those participants, so, well done. The other thing that the Senior Advisory Board voted on this past month was to contribute $250 per year towards our fee assistant program, which is gonna allow seniors to apply for fee assistance to any program at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center. So we have, we already have the application process set up through the Friends of Cordova, this is just an add-on to that, so it'll still be the same application process, and we'll take a look at those, and then we'll be able to help seniors who are 50-plus be able to take some programs and help them with their fees, so we're excited about that, and so they've, you know, right now, they're gonna contribute $250 per year, and then we're gonna see what the need is, and possibly, they'll be able to increase that in the future, so, really excited about that, and again, thankful for the Senior Advisory Board. The other stuff that's in your packet is 2020 CRPD Events Calendar that we put together, it is subject to change, but for the most part, these events should be set, ready to go, if there are any changes, of course, I'll update the board members, but as you can see, we have all the events that we are either hosting or sponsoring, so there are all of our events through, whether it's the hideout, the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, our special events throughout the year, also the CCC events that we host at the Village Green or at Hagan Park or throughout the district, and then at the end, on the last page, page three, we still anticipate doing the food truck events at Rosemont Community Park, which is the first Friday of every month from April through October, and then at Eagles Nest from March to September for every Tuesday. So, here's your calendar, like I said, if I have any updates, I'll make sure that I present those to you each month, but enjoy, and let me know if you have any questions. The last thing is the special event invitation page. Basically, our holiday recognition party is tomorrow, so that's over at the Hagan Community Center at 11:30, so hopefully, we'll see you all there, and then the Discovery Kids Preschool Winter Celebration is Friday at the Hagan Community Center in Building 1 from 9:30 to 11:30, and we have a special Santa this year that will be visiting us, so you might want to come out and visit General Manager Patrick Larkin, who's going to be our Santa. And that's my report, thank you.
Okay, let's go on to item J, informational items.
Thank you, item J1 is Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We have two articles, and then an audio clip was sent to the board via email on the CAP Radio News regarding Claimstick Brewing at the golf course, so that's super exciting. And then item J2 is your calendar.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Item K, adjournment. Next regular, regular meeting for the Board of Directors for the River Recreation and Park District is Wednesday, January 15th, 2020 at 6:30 p.m. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Board of Directors on Wednesday, January 15th at 6:30 p.m.
The holiday card, thanks, Director Reyes.
We adjourn, folks.
Amen.